It's Tuesday the fourteenth and I'd like to call this Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Krieger.
I'm here.
Mr. Bigick.
Here.
Mr. Coonan.
We're here, here.
Mr. Herrick.
Here.
Ryder.
Yeah.
Mr. Lutz.
Here.
And Chair Durancheck.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you ma'am. Invocation. Have you got a little something for us there Cindy?
Sure.
Thank you.
Your heads if you would. Almighty and eternal God, Governor of all things in heaven and on earth, we ask that you will bless this county commission this day. We ask that you lead and direct this board to work for this county and that you grant them the knowledge and understanding of the needs for this community. In your holy name we ask this. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. I would also like a moment to pause to reflect on some good things for a moment of silence for all the COVID-19 victims of not just Bay County, the state of Michigan, USA and whole world. Just a moment. Now if you don't mind, how about the Pledge of Allegiance?
Hey, place your hand over your heart please. I pledge allegiance
To the flag, the United States of America.
To the republic. Nation, God.
Under God.
Invisible.
Liberty and justice. Justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you all. Minutes. Do you have any minutes?
Support.
We have motion and support. Roll call vote please.
It's the date Tina, April 14. No, no, no. 10? These would be the March 10 minutes, starting with Commissioner Ryder. Lutz.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Bigick.
Yes.
Coonan.
Yes.
Herrick.
Yes.
And Durancheck.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays. Minutes. Thank you.
So just an import. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Please up to a microphone. If you're at the community center or if you're on Zoom, raise your hand.
If people are calling in on their phones, they can hit star nine. If they're only on their phones, star nine to raise their hand.
There's nobody. I don't see anybody. Alright. Moving ahead, petitions and communications. I don't think we had anything on the agenda there, did we? Reports and resolutions of committees. Ways and means. Tom, Eric, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Here we go. Resolution number 2020-62, the COVID-19 extension of local state of emergency. I move that resolution.
Board. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote ma'am.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Bigick. Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Durancheck.
Yes.
And we're missing a vote for Commissioner Bigick. He's moving about the room.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. That approves the resolution 2020-62. Motion carries. Thank you.
Resolution number 2020-63, the COVID-19 temporary suspension, suspension of resolution number 81335, design required documents. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. Madam Clerk, would you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Bigick.
Yes.
Coonan.
Yes.
Herrick.
Yes.
Ryder.
Yes.
Lutz.
Yes.
Chair Durancheck.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Resolution number 2020-64, the suspension of Board Resolution Number 2014-32 to allow August ballot question. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got.
Commissioner Coonan.
I hit the, just so, I hit the raised hand. Did you see that or is it just, I thought we were all?
I saw, I saw your hand.
Okay, well then that, you know.
You have the floor.
What resolution were we on?
I think it's 2020.
I voted for the original resolution. That way when, when we adopted it, so I'm still opposed. I did talk to the people at the facility and they would like to do it in August for some, some reasons that I appreciate, but I'm still opposed to voting in August. I think it should be in November. Thank you.
Commissioner Coonan, head the floor.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. You know, I agree with Vaughn on that. I'm going to support the facility however we have to do that, whether it's through some funds that we have in our, our reserve fund and/or the, the millage. But we put together this resolution specifically to keep, you know, various interests off of an election date other than in November. So I'm going to support it, except I'm not going to support this particular resolution going from November to August.
Anyone else? Commissioner Krieger.
Thank you. And I, I did also do the blue hand, so I don't know if that's not coming up for everybody, but along with Vaughn and Kim, I'm of the same mindset that, you know, back in 2014, I think when we did the original resolution, there were reasons why we wanted it to stay in November and I, and I feel that those are still something that we should abide by. So I won't be supporting this resolution either. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Redman.
Redman.
You have the floor.
Yeah, I would think this should go to November because they can't collect the taxes until 2020 anyway. That way we keep the original resolution that was adopted a long time ago and to keep all these elections in November where there are a lot more people that vote.
Commissioner Ryder.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this is appropriate, but could we amend the resolution to reflect a November ballot versus a August ballot?
I don't think.
Let's hear from the clerk on this, please. Do you have a comment Cindy?
No, I would defer to Amber Johnson. I think the request was made for this ballot. I think you're voting on this as is. You might need another resolution for November. I don't know, Amber.
Yeah, I think that you would have to vote this one down and bring a new resolution to have it come up in November. I also see Commissioner Coonan waving his hand.
You know, I, I thought if we were to vote down 64 and then vote yes for 65, that's just the question. It doesn't have the date, does it?
Let me see. In one August, it's either yes or no.
Yeah, it's got the date.
Yeah.
Tom, if I don't have, if you're going to amend it, I don't have a problem seconding it.
I, I, again, I, I think maybe the, Bob, as our parliamentarian, could, could give some insight, but I believe that the resolution is as it is. You voted up or you voted down. If you voted down, you could ask to amend it after that point in time and pass something else, but this resolution is as it is.
Well, as your parliamentarian.
Mr. Redman.
Can be amended. Just saying August and November. And I met with Mike Podolski in that group and it wasn't a big deal whether it was August or November. It was, maybe it was a mistake on my part because I understood we were going to go in November. They didn't have a problem with that.
If I can add something?
Yes.
You can vote down the resolution that you're talking about and then on the next resolution, you simply change the date. It says August 4th, 2020. Change it to November, whatever the date is, and I think you're okay.
Bob, since you're our parliamentarian, if we did, if the committee, the Board of Commissioners did vote down 64 and make that amendment in 65, would that be proper?
Yes. If you don't vote for 64, you can't change it. It's got to go around November, my previous board resolution.
Okay, alright.
And I would agree with that.
Very good. Anyone else have any input? Hey, we're taking a vote. We have on 2020-64.
Okay. We'll start the vote.
Yes ma'am.
Bigick starts the vote. Commissioner Bigick. Resolution. Coonan?
No.
Herrick?
No.
Ryder?
No.
Lutz?
No.
Krieger?
No.
And Durancheck.
No.
Seven nays, zero yays, seven nays. Resolution is defeated.
Going, going forward, resolution number 2020-65, the Bay Medical Care Facility Millage Question with the amendment to change to the November, I don't know what the date is, November 6?
Third.
Third.
Third, the November 3rd, 2020 ballot. So I'd like to move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Herrick.
Yes.
Ryder.
Yes.
Lutz.
Yes.
Durancheck.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Bigick.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Resolution number 2020-66, the full faith and credit for Waldo Drain Project. I move that resolution.
I got the Zoom.
Support. Billy.
We have motion and support. Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigick.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes, yes.
Chair Durancheck.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you ma'am.
I'll move the 2019 rain report. I'll move to receive that resolution.
Board. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Starting with Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Bigick.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Chair Durancheck.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
From the Sheriff's, from the Sheriff's Office, Resolution Number 2020-67, the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program. I'll move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Starting with Commissioner Lutz, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Bigick.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Chair Durancheck.
Yes.
So total seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you ma'am.
Resolution number 2020-68, the Stone Garden Grant Award Agreement. I move that resolution.
Support.
Are you the only guy supporting this stuff?
Who was, who was that? Who supported?
Kim.
Okay, thank you.
I'll let you guys support too down the road, okay? And I can do them all if you want.
You're the man.
I don't want to be.
You're the man.
I don't want to be.
We have, we have motion and support. Roll call vote please.
Starting with Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigick.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Chair Durancheck.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you ma'am.
Resolution number 2020-69, credit card processing and additional appropriation. I move that resolution.
Support. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Just one comment. Thank you very much Shauna for taking care of the health and welfare of the people in the, in your office and making it easy for the folks to pay. So good job on this.
Thank you.
We have motion and support. Any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Starting with Commissioner Bigick.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
And Chair Durancheck.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Resolution number 2020-70, Treatment Court Grant Application. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Do you have your hand up?
No, I'm, I'm fine. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay. Any, any one discussion? Roll call vote please.
Starting with Commissioner Coonan on deck.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigick.
Yes.
Chair Durancheck.
Yes. Thank you Kim for doing this.
Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
From the Director of Recreation and Facilities, Resolution Number 2020-71, the Boys and Girls Club Summer Program. I'll move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. Discussion. Commissioner Krieger.
Yep, just questioning the, the start date of the programs. Do we have any dates?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, good. It starts right when school typically gets out, so I'm assuming it's still going to be in June. With this resolution, I sent it in before the stay home order. So assuming that the start, it actually starts and summer camps don't get canceled for the year, we wouldn't send out the contract or the appropriation, you know, the dollars until we know that for sure.
Will we be able to put on the website information for the public so they kind of can plan or, or look at what they're going to do with their kids in the summer programs?
We, okay, so just to be clear, this is for the Boys and Girls Club, not the Summer Recreation Program. So for the Summer Recreation Program, we do have information out there on the website right now, although signups are supposed to begin in May and right now with the stay home order, we don't exactly know what summer's going to bring. I can talk to the Boys and Girls Club and see what kind of information they're going to be putting out. I'm sure they're still in a holding pattern as well.
Yeah, just so we can coordinate and keep the public, you know, kind of tuned in. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call vote please.
Starting with Commissioner Herrick, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigick.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
And Chair Durancheck.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Resolution number 2020-72, the upgrade to the pump house controls at the golf course. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. Discussion. Mr. Commissioner Krieger, you're first.
Yep, thank you. So Kristen, this is just the controls. It doesn't have anything to do with the mechanics of the, the pump itself?
Correct. So the pump house and the controls were installed in 1986, so they're very old and outdated. And we are, we've worked on the actual physical pumps. There's two large pumps and a small pump in the pump house. And we've had them worked on in the past. So those are sitting okay at the moment, but the controls, we're very worried about failure. So with the new pond being connected to the irrigation pond, we do have more needs in terms of the controls because what we found at the end of last season is that if we pump down the irrigation pond to a certain level, the drainage at the course is a lot better because the water actually has a place to go, right? And so we took our irrigation pond and connected it to the new pond and with our controls, we'll be able to pump the irrigation pond into the new pond, which will improve the drainage, but also put more stress, you know, on the system and it'll require us to have more needs in term of the control panel and that thing, that setup. So a whole new system, like if we were replacing the pumps and everything, would probably be a hundred thousand dollars. But just the controls, we're, we're looking at just over eighteen thousand dollars for just to replace the controls. But if we ever did have an issue with the pumps, this would be congruent and they'd be able to work with new pumps as well.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Coonan, you were next up.
Thank you sir. Good information Kristen. I guess the only question I had was how much is in that line item? I haven't seen it. And maybe, you know, it'd be nice to know how much was in there, if it's a completed project and all that, and then we can track that money.
Yep, it is completed. So we have ninety-four thousand five hundred in this capital assets line item in the golf course fund. And that's all from the soil sale from the new pond. And so this would, we would essentially be capturing like eighteen thousand, just, just over eighteen thousand dollars for this project. Although remember in the golf course fund that we actually depreciate big capital items? So we'd just be using a piece of that every single year, but we would capture the whole thing. If that makes sense.
Thank you. You know, I know they were talking at one time, hundred and fifty thousand dollars or greater. So the end amount was ninety-four thousand?
Yes, and we had surveys done in, in both our county survey and their survey came in at ninety-four thousand five hundred.
Alright, thanks.
Next up, I have Commissioner Ryder.
Kristen, I got your question, Mr. Chairman.
I didn't hear that.
Kristen just answered my questions. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you Commissioner. Mr. Barsha, you were up.
Chairman answered the question. I was going to say the money was coming from the clay that was sold to Fisher Contracting. And I know there's a lot of support among the golf leagues for a little extra help on drainage out there on the golf course. So I'm real pleased if you adopt this resolution. I know the golf leagues and the golfers will be happy. Hopefully it'll work.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call vote please.
Starting with Commissioner Ryder, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigick.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
And Chair Durancheck.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you ma'am.
Resolution number 2020-73, the acceptance of the 2020 Veterans Affair Agency Service Grant. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Starting with Commissioner Lutz, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigick.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder. Chair Durancheck.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Resolution number 2020-74, the 2020 Bay County Equalization Report. I move to receive that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. Commissioner Coonan.
Thank you sir. I'm looking at the percent of change from nineteen, 2019 to 2020. And I'm not sure if Kelly's around or if not, maybe I.
I'm here.
Okay, this question, oh good, maybe you can answer this question. This is on the total and it is four points seven seven increase. Is that going to be what the projected revenue, the additional revenue would be, is an additional four point seven seven percent?
Yes, I'm working on those numbers and I will get you that report in the morning. I was trying to get the totals for the IFTs before I gave you the total amount.
Okay, because that looks significantly more than what we've had in the past. Is that somewhat of an accurate assumption?
That is completely accurate, sir.
Well, that's good because I can't remember exactly how much, you know, and, and maybe for budgeting purposes, we can project what we would have, and this is going to be in '21, how many additional dollars coming from the taxable. That would be great to know because, you know, budgeting is, is going to be kind of important going forward, I think.
I will have you in that report in the morning.
Thank you ma'am.
Anyone else have any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Starting with Commissioner Krieger, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Bigick.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Chair Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays, motion carried.
Thank you, ma'am.
Resolution Number 2020-75, the payables. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Starting with Commissioner Big Eck, please. Commissioner Big Eck, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Had to wake him up.
Okay. Commissioner Coonan?
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
And Commissioner Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero-
Yes.
Motion carries.
From Patrick O'Shea, request for $5,000 from Bay County for pickleball courts at Carroll Park. I'll move that resolution. Let's see what we want to do with it.
Support. We have motion and support. Discussion. Commissioner Coonan?
Thank you. I support this because I think it's a good collaboration with the city and the private sector. The city's going to contribute the $5,000. Initially, they wanted 10. The city must have given 5, and we would match what the city would give. And then I think they're going to the various, they'll have some direct contributions from the folks, but they're also going to the different foundations. And pickleball is an up-and-coming sport for, I would guess, seniors, you know, because a lot of folks that played racquetball or played tennis, they just don't have the ability to move as quick and cut as quick. So I think it's a great opportunity to enhance Carroll Park and to provide recreational opportunities. I've always supported recreational opportunities, whether it was at the community center with the facilities that we put in there or whatever golf course, or even the ice arena. And so I'm going to support this because I think it shows how we can collaboratively work together, and I think we're going to have to do more of that in the future.
Commissioner Ryder?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we refer this resolution at this time. I just think with all, our businesses suffering as they are today, and how long that will last, we don't know. People not longer working, growing unemployment, I just don't think this is a good, to bring up this resolution. I think it's a worthwhile project. I agree with Commissioner Coonan about working together with other municipalities, but I don't believe that this is an opportune time to spend the $5,000. People are just going to be looking at, what are you doing? So I would move that we refer this resolution at this time.
I'll support that.
I'm in.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yeah, you know, I think that, I think the way he's doing it is really good. I liked it, but, you know, in a way, I think I'd like to see, like, if him to get, to get kind of the rest of the money, you know, so rather than just us throwing money out there right now, that if, you know, if he's got $5,000 in the city, but he talks about raising some other funds too. And when he has the funds, I mean, I'd almost like to say, well, okay, as soon as you, when you get enough money to do the project, rather than laying the money out there. You know, I think that's a, that's a little bit safer way to go, you know, and puts us on better ground, rather than just saying, here's $5,000, and, you know, get a half a project done, and I can't raise the rest of the money. I'd like to see, you know, find the other, some of the other money first. But I like the project. I think it's a great idea.
Commissioner Krieger, you were next. Commissioner Krieger?
Yeah, I, what I was saying was I would support Mr. Ryder and bring it back at another time.
Commissioner Big Eck?
Oh, it's me. Sorry, I'm on a 10-second delay here, so I support Ryder, Commissioner Ryder's resolution. I don't think, I like pickleball. I'm getting one of those older people, and I've seen him play it here at the community center quite a bit, but I think this is not the time to be spending money.
Anyone else?
I think I had my hand up.
Commissioner Coonan?
Yeah, and here's what I, and I agree with Commissioner Herrick. We're not giving them the money. We're just allocating that if they get all of their other money, we will give them. We're not going to get, you know, cut a check for $5,000. That money is dependent on them getting all the other money that they need, then we release the money. But if you, if you refer it, you're technically killing it because timing is an issue here for them to have it, the project completed, so they can use it in the summer, so. But I don't have a prob, I don't think we're just giving them money. I think if they come up with the money from the city and all the money from, the rest of the money from foundations or private donors, then, then if we move on this, then the money's there. I mean, we're not just going to give them the money. They gotta come up with all the other money, then we would release it.
Mr. Barsha? He's muted.
Julie, can you unmute Jim?
Mr. Barsha is muted.
Yep, just a second. I think we're quick.
We'll hear from Mr. Herrick. Commissioner Herrick, he's available.
Yeah, yes, and I, you know, I'd like to know if, you know, what we talked about, Amber, if that's possible to, I don't see that as a contingency right now, you know, if I raise the other money first, then they would get the money. I mean, if we pass this, would they be getting the money right away? How's that going to play out? That's what I want. That's my question to Corporation Council.
Hello?
You can allocate the money, you know, with whatever contingency you want, but again, I think it's a procedural issue. You're going to have to amend the resolution stating that you'll allocate the money to them and you'll provide it after they have secured all of the additional funding, that it's contingent upon them securing all of the additional funding.
Commissioner Coonan, you making that, is that what you're amending?
Yeah, I amended it.
No, I'll support that.
Anyone else? Commissioner Ryder?
I guess I don't know. I thought, I thought there was a motion and a support to refer. And so how is that amended to refer by Commissioner Coonan's? I don't think that's, that's the way we can do it. I think that motion to refer and support has to be voted on.
Correct. That's, that's what my understanding is, that you, we have to do, either vote for or against the motion to refer.
And if you vote against, if you vote against the motion to refer, I believe that the initial motion is still up and can be amended at that point.
Correct. That's the way I'm looking at, that is the way I'm looking at it too, ma'am.
Sure. So I guess what I'm saying is the amendment is the amendment to the original motion, so.
Leave this meeting?
Right now, we're going to vote on-
I think Jim's got a voice.
You out there, Jim?
I think we lost him.
I think he disconnected and is trying to reconnect.
All right.
Because I heard him saying he's leaving the meeting.
All right. So we have a motion and support to refer. This is what we're going to vote on first. Roll call vote, please.
Okay. We'll start the roll call and the motion to refer with Commissioner Coonan.
No.
Commissioner Herrick?
No.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
That was a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Big Eck?
Yes.
And Commissioner Durancheck?
No.
We have four yays and three nays. Motion will be referred.
Okay. Next up, we have tuition reimbursement requests from Leah Fornier, Jennifer Davenport, Emily Nelson, Craig Gillette, and the report of the 2020 tuition reimbursement request. Motion to receive is in order. I move that, I move that motion.
Support. We have motion, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Starting with Commissioner Herrick, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Big Eck?
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan?
Yes.
Chair Durancheck?
Yes.
Vote, seven yays, zero nays, motion carries.
That is all from the Ways and Means Committee, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. or Commissioner Herrick. Next, we have from Personnel and Human Services, Tom Ryder, Chairman. Commissioner-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Resolution 2020-76, COVID-19 vacancies. I would refer 76.
Refer?
I would move 76.
Support.
Support.
We have motion and support. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Starting with Commissioner Ryder, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Big Eck?
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
And also Chair Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays, carries.
Thanks a lot, ma'am.
Resolution 2020-77, COVID-19, families, coronavirus response app, I would say. I would move this resolution.
Support. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Starting with Commissioner Lutz, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Big Eck?
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan?
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Chair Durancheck?
Yes.
Vote total, seven yays, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm sorry. We have Resolution 2020-78, the healthcare provider, first response, FFCA benefits. I would move this resolution.
I support.
Commissioner Big Eck, Commissioner Big Eck supported. Roll call vote, please.
Starting with Commissioner Krieger, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Big Eck?
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan?
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
And Chair Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays, motion carries.
We have Resolution 2020-79, neighbors obey advertising agreement. I would move this resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. Discussion. Commissioner Krieger?
Thank you. So the total amount, what it would cost us to put this ad for the year is?
For the year? Okay, so let me be clear. It's $224 every ad, and we're going to do four ads a year. So my math is bad, but 224 times 4.
Okay. And the ads we're putting in are for the civic arena, the golf course?
And we're all, so the civic arena will do one, the golf course will do one, and then Department on Aging will do two. We're going to split the contract.
Okay. And will any of this money come out of Division on Aging's budget?
The two advertisements a year that Division on Aging do will come out of their budget. The civic arena, one will come out of the civic arena's budget, and the golf course, one will come out of the golf course's budget. It will be invoiced separately for every single ad.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Starting with Commissioner Big Eck, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Coonan?
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
And Chair Durancheck?
Yes.
Be seven yays, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Ryder, do we have anything else?
Yes, we do. Resolution 2020-80, agreement with K-9 trainer. I would move this resolution.
Support.
We have motion, we have motion and support. Discussion? Roll call, Commissioner Krieger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So when we discussed this at our last meeting, I know I was told that this was going to be self-sufficient, that the money that we're going to pay this trainer is actually coming from the sales of the dogs. Is that correct?
Yeah, the increased adoption fees, correct.
So nothing will come from the general fund?
No.
Okay, Amber said nothing will come from the general fund. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Roll call vote, please.
Hey, starting with Commissioner Coonan, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Big Eck?
Yes.
Chair Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays, motion carries.
Resolution 2020-81, health space software upgrade. I would move this resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Starting with Commissioner Herrick, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Big Eck?
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan?
Yes.
And Chair Durancheck?
Yes.
Okay. Seven yays, zero nays are the vote. Motion is carried.
Resolution 2020-82, vacancies, nine more from Central Dispatcher and Sheriff's National Facility Officer. I would move this resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. Discussion. Commissioner Krieger?
Thank you. So Teff, if you could answer a question for me. On 911, we had a program, I thought, set up where we had a bank of individuals that were wanting to become dispatchers. Do we still- Do we still pull from that pool? Or do we have to go outside and find new people?
No, we continue to pull from that pool.
Okay, and that's been working pretty decent?
It has, yep.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you.
Sure.
I see that Chris is also in the meeting in case you had any other questions for him also.
Well, Deanne's up there.
Yes, Deanne.
I'd like to clarify that the resolution also includes the Office of Public Defender, a legal secretary that came in later than the resolution, than I had listed on the agenda. So, there is a third position in there. I just wanted to point that out.
I would ask that that is included.
We have motion and support. Anyone else discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Starting with Commissioner Ryder, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
And Chair Durancheck.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by seven yays, zero nays.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have from the Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Lutz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today I bring Resolution 2020-83, Carstens' 100th Birthday Tribute. Commissioner Durancheck. I move that resolution.
Support.
We had Commissioner Watson. Who was the, who seconded that?
Commissioner Ryder. Begic.
Commissioner Begic.
Thank you.
Yes.
We have motion and support. Discussion? Commissioner Krieger.
Thank you. If we could, could we have the clerk read the resolution? Thank you.
You ready?
Yes.
For the record, to congratulate this gentleman, Resolution 2020-83 by the Bay County Board of Commissioners. Whereas, there are many individuals in Bay County deserving of recognition for their contributions to Bay County. And one of these worthy individuals is Calvin Zeno Carstens. Whereas, the oldest of seven children, Calvin Zeno Carstens, born April 17, 1920, to William and Anna Wiki Carstens, shows his penchant for hard work at a very early age from working at the General Store and Post Office along with his parents to do everyday chores. Whereas, early on, Calvin Carstens developed a love of flying, which would become a major part of his life. And whereas, at age 19, while in California, Calvin Carstens tried out for the UC Berkeley baseball team, and like his father Bill, became a very good baseball player, eventually playing professional baseball as a pitcher in the Cincinnati Reds organization. And whereas, upon his return to Michigan in 1940, Calvin Carstens met the love of his life, Dorothy Marion Rainey. And they married on November 23, 1943. Other, they raised three children and have shared 76 loving years. And on November 26, 1941, Calvin Carstens enlisted in the US Army. And after rigorous training and varied assignments, mastered piloting various aircraft. Whereas, May 28, 1943, short time later, Calvin Carstens graduated from George Field in Lawrenceburg, Illinois as a pilot. But they served commission as a second lieutenant in the US Army Air Corps, where he had graduated from flying twin-engine TA-10 aircraft. And whereas, in addition to the many missions he flew, Calvin Carstens was a participant in the Rome Arno Air Offensive, the EMEA ribbon with three bronze stars, as well as an assortment of 15th Air Force Service ribbons. Whereas, upon his return to his hometown, Calvin Carstens saw the need for a regional airport, and through his efforts and those of local Pin County businesses and community-minded individuals, that goal was achieved. Participated in rescue missions on the Saginaw Bay. On one occasion, finding two lost fishermen, and on another, rescuing 12 men afloat on a small boat, February 2nd, 1950. National news. In 1951, Calvin Carstens was called back to the US Air Force during the Korean War and was released from the US Air Force in 1953 as a captain. Whereas, Calvin Carstens began his salient career at Magline as a purchasing agent and retired in 1985. Whereas, Calvin and Dottie have enjoyed their many travels to the United States, England, and the rest of Europe, and continue to enjoy life with their family, friends, and his church family. Whereas, from a farm boy to professional baseball player, to husband, World War II pilot with credit for 51 missions, to developer, crop duster, photographer, rescuer. Reassembled in the US Air Force during the Korean War. Salesman and purchasing agent for Magline. Retirement and still being very active, Calvin Zeno Carstens is still going strong at 100 years of age. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and Bay County Executive recognize Calvin Zeno Carstens for his incredible military career, his lifelong dedication and commitment to giving back and faithfully serving his country and community. Michael Durancheck, Chair and Board. Congratulations, sir.
Commissioner Krieger.
Thank you. I would say, he is truly a Bay County hero. And my hat's off to him. Congratulations. Thank you.
I have a file provided to Deanne. And about 10 pages. This is the stuff movies are made of. I've got to forward it to you, Commissioners. Some pretty good reading. With that, thank you. Roll call, vote please.
A little adoption of this congratulatory resolution by Commissioner Begic, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
And the final stamp of approval by Commissioner Durancheck.
You bet. Yes.
Motion carries, seven yays, zero nays. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Chairman, I bring Resolution 2020-84. It's the reports of the county executive. I move to receive them.
Support.
We have motion and support to receive the reports of the county executive. Any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Start with Commissioner Krieger, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder. Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Chair Durancheck.
Yes.
That would be seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries. Thank you.
And that's all I have on the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Chairman.
And thank you, Commissioner Lutz. Reports of the county officials. County Executive, Mr. Barsha is back with us, I thought.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a little issue with the host there. We got it worked out. I just want to thank the board for all you're doing, and also, especially for thanking the, well, I want to thank you for extending the emergency declaration for Bay County until April 30. That will be very helpful. Also, want to commend everyone in Bay County who has been doing their part to slow the spread of COVID-19. Everyone seems to be pitching in, whether they're making homemade masks to donate, helping our essential workforce by simply staying home as often as possible, doing whatever they can to provide moral support for people who are out there on the front lines. And I want to especially recognize those who have been deemed as essential, both here in the county and in the county government, as well as across our county, all the residents, from our grocery store employees to postal workers, food service workers, and of course, those in the medical other emergency fields, as well as our first responders who are confronting the virus firsthand as a team. So, I'd also like to thank our Bay County workforce for continuing to provide the best services possible during this very difficult time, some of whom are working day and night to ensure that the public is kept informed and included in local government deliberations as we move forward. And finally, I'd like to say I'm glad to see that Commissioner Coonan is doing better and recovering from his own experience with COVID-19. Our thoughts are with all of those who have been affected and continue to be affected by this fast-spreading disease. I know this has been difficult on everyone, but if we keep working together, we will see a light at the end of the tunnel here, hopefully in the not-too-distant future. And I guess that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have unfinished business. Commissioner Lutz, did you have anything?
Is this motion under unfinished business? I'm going to withdraw. Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much. New business. Under A, we have Resolution 2020-85, Amendment Four to CPBC Agreement from the Health Department. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? So.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Roll call first. Commissioner Begic, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
And Commissioner Durancheck.
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Next, we have Resolution under New Business, Resolution 2020-86, Senior Project Fresh Market Fresh Program. That comes to us from the Department on Aging.
I'll move that.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call, vote, ma'am.
Starting with Commissioner Coonan, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
And Chair Durancheck.
Yes.
Thank you. Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am. Resolution number 2020-87, Bay City Public School Resource Officer Agreement. Some of Sheriff. We have motion and support. Commissioner Coonan.
Yeah, could we do 87, 88, and 89? They're all basically the same. They're just dealing with Bay City, Pin County, and Bangor.
Yes, sir. If you'd make that motion, that would be great.
I'll move. I'll support it.
We have motion and support for 2020-86, 87, 88. Any discussion?
87, 88, 89.
Yeah, you had that wrong, Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed a number. Correct. 87, 88, and 89. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Thank you. Beginning with Commissioner Herrick, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Chair Durancheck.
Yes.
All three resolutions passed by seven yays, zero nays.
Thank you, ma'am. Late addition, Resolution number 2020-90 from Corporation Council, I believe. And it has to do with the extension for the purchase of the county market. Pretty much, it resumes within 63 days after the duration of the COVID-19 pandemic has been resolved in Michigan.
I would move this resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Beginning with Commissioner Ryder, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.[1615.68]
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
And Chair Durancheck.
Yes.
Motion carries, seven yays, zero nays.
Thank you, ma'am. I believe that's all we had on your new business.
Kim Hassel, Kim. Yeah, I thought Deanne sent out a a letter today regarding the board appointment at the care facility and Department of Human Services. We had an individual step down, creating a vacancy, and that vacancy, it's a government or governor's appointment. But we, as the board, are able to make a recommendation to the governor. And if I'm, did everybody get or did anybody get that email? I didn't get it, but I spoke.
Commissioner Coonan?
Yeah.
Commissioner, my apologies, I did receive it, and I, Deanne did, you know, I'm sure she sent it out to everyone. So, but my apologies, I had it written down here, but I just, I ran over it. Sorry.
All right. You're going to bring it up, then?
Yes.
All right.
I, after a discussion with Corporation Council, and I mean, there may be other people, person that you were interested in, extremely qualified, in my opinion, but there may be other people that may want to apply. And I'm not sure, I know our policy, I asked Corporation Council, and she said it may be better to, you know, post it that we're going to make a recommendation to the governor. But this has to be done, I would assume, pretty quickly, too.
Absolutely. That's why, that doesn't preclude anybody from applying. But this individual did apply, and, you know, we can't wait another month because, you know, it, that will remain vacant out there, and that's, you know, they're going through some some difficult times right now. So my suggestion, if somebody else, if somebody else applies, then we can vote on that, too, and say, hey, we recommend them both to the governor, and whatever she wants to do is, is up to her. But being that this individual did put his name in, and, and he has very good qualification, I still think that it doesn't hurt that, the fact that we sent our endorsement to the governor for this individual. Anybody else that wants to apply can apply as well.
I'm on board with that, Commissioner Coonan, if you, if you would like to make a motion of that.
Yes, I will make a motion that the board endorses Rick Meath, who was a school teacher and is president of the Bay City Education Association, to the vacated position at the Bay Medical Care Facility and Department of Human Services. And if anybody else, I don't know if you want this, but if anybody else wanted to apply, that does not preclude them from applying as well.
Support.
I'll support it.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Just as a point, once we, I'm sure this is going to pass, but once it does, we should also get this to Representative Elder, so that he can help, you know, along with some of these, too, because I believe he's, he's a really, you know, qualified, extremely qualified person. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
I'm going to roll call with Commissioner Lutz, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Begic.
Yes.
Coonan.
Yes.
Herrick.
Yes.
Ryder.
Yes.
Chair Durancheck.
Yes.
Motion carries, seven yays, zero nays.
Thank you, ma'am. And again, my apologies, Commissioner Coonan, for not having it down.
Oh, that's all right. I, that's fine.
Anything else? Mislenious. Well, miscellaneous announcements. Twenty-twenty appointments in June, Library Board, one five-year term. October, Land Bank Authority, one three-year term. Also in October, Department of Health and Human Services Board of Directors, one three-year term. November, Building Authority, one six-year term. December, Department on Aging Advisory Committee, four-year terms expiring districts two, four, six, and then at-large. Is there, you know, is there any need for a close set, ma'am?
Oh, gosh, no, there certainly is not.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic wishes to address the commission.
So next Tuesday, a week from today, at one o'clock, we're having a MAC Board meeting. Grant Holmes going to join us. They're asking questions. If you have any questions you want me to submit. I have one already from Begic Nursery to submit to her. And if you have any other questions you'd like submitted about what's happening or what's happening down the road, send me an email or give me a call. The next Tuesday at one o'clock, we'll be meeting. Thank you.
One other thing to Ryan and Chris, you guys over there at nine-one-one, doing a great job. Ryan, on your operation center meetings and stuff, looks like you're really organized and stuff, and it's a good, good job. This is a, this is a test of everybody's system and what kind of people you got working for you. Good job.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
Yep, if, if we could, we have Joel Strauss with us. If, if we could have him just speak for a moment or two to bring everybody up to date. I mean, we get the, the weeklies on Monday, but it would be nice if Joel could kind of address the county.
Sure. Absolutely. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. As of today, we have sixty confirmed cases of coronavirus, and we have five probable cases. That's a new classification from the state, so a probable case is where there's a confirmed case, and if you've got someone that is in close contact with a confirmed case, and they have symptoms. Due to the lack of testing materials right now, they're allowing that to, someone to be considered a probable case. Unfortunately, as we mentioned before, we have two fatalities that are associated with this, but we have ten recoveries, which is a good report as of today. We are in, constantly talking to the hospital, Ryan Mans, myself, Dr. Bender, Melissa Mallett. We talk every day with the hospital. We have a daily situation report. And I'm glad to say as of today that their census is down. And even though they have a fair number of coronavirus patients there, it's not overwhelming. And they're, they've got enough PPE for right now to continue. We continue to maintain a really close eye on long-term care facilities. We've had a couple of flare-ups with positive cases there. And we're in constant contact with the long-term care facilities to make sure that that situation doesn't grow out of hand like it did in Washington and New York and Boston. The other thing that we've done is we've instituted and implemented a healthcare worker and essential workforce worker surveillance system. And that's going fairly well so far. We've got most of the major institutions reporting to that. And it's a, it's a way that healthcare workers can twice a day check in to determine if they're, if they're symptoms. And if they are symptomatic, we try to work with the facility or work with the provider to get them out of harm's way as soon as possible, because number one, we don't want them further spreading the virus to, on, to unknowing patients or other healthcare workers, because that was the, the greatest spread in Italy and in New York. And as of right now, when we do the analysis on the numbers, it's the greatest amount of spread that we've had so far, so about fifty-two percent of current positive cases are healthcare workers. But another twelve percent are essential workers overall. So with that being said, I'm glad to say that the, the efforts that we've had and that the stay-at-home orders have really done a lot to, to, to slow the spread of the virus. It was our fear that, at this point in time, about four weeks ago, that we would see our healthcare system overwhelmed, and that certainly is not the case as of yet. We do expect that we're going to see increases in people that are positive with the virus. But our goal is that to keep this at a manageable rate and to ensure that the healthcare system, the hospital, and especially long-term care facilities and the other care facilities are not overwhelmed either. So I think we've done a fairly good job here so far, but there's a lot more that we have to do.
Thank you. Got a couple of people that wish to speak here. Ryan Mans, you were up next.
Oh, I just wanted to thank, thank you everybody for the kind words, and just know that we couldn't do what we're doing without the help that we've got from the rest of the staff, our PIO crews, the incident management team at the county level, all of those pitching in, digging in, and doing some good, hard work for all of us. So just thank you, everyone, for the support and everything that we can do for Joel to make his job easier. We need to be doing that.
Thank you, Ryan. Next up, we have Mr. Redmond.
Yeah, I'd like to compliment Jim Barsha's IT department for an excellent job. He really made this easy.
Yeah, they did.
Thanks.
Yeah, good job, you guys, all, all you. Mr. Barsha, you were.
No, I was just, I wanted to also, I was looking forward to Joel commenting here during the, before the meeting concluded. Want to just say what a phenomenal job he is doing with his entire team at the Health Department, and of course, Ryan, Mr. Chairman, you've already acknowledged Ryan's devotion and dedication to, you know, protecting all of the Bay County residents. And when we get through this crisis, we may be facing another emergency with flooding in the, in the summer. So, you know, we're all going to be tested pretty, pretty hard. But of course, Chris Izworski and the, and the terrific team over at Central Dispatch, too, they're handling everything so well, and, and our law enforcement team doing a tremendous job. And I know Beth is still on the line, and I know many of our homebound seniors and people with medical issues, Beth, are very, very happy to be getting their meals delivered three days a week in person, and I know the Department on Aging is making sure they have excellent meals to fill in on Tuesdays and Thursdays to help keep them, you know, nutritionally robust, but also avoiding some of our seniors from having to go out into the grocery stores and, and shop. And Bob also wanted to thank you for complimenting the IT department and ISD department, because they've been working overtime, not only for this meeting, but with all the challenges the county's facing. So just want to thank all the commission, all the staff, and of course, we're, we're all running on all cylinders and doing our best. But thank you, Joel, for, again, for the leadership you're providing in guiding Bay County through, through what is probably one of the most difficult times that we faced in recent years. So, recent decades. Thank you, Joel. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
There's a little compliment to Beth over there at DOA. I heard that, I don't know if it's true or not, that last week was the all-time high amount of meals in a week?
Yeah, we delivered nine hundred hot meals on Thursday, along with a six-day emergency meal out for Friday and then this week, and that was almost sixty-three hundred meals provided.
Sixty-three hundred meals, sixty? That's great.
Yeah, we're still, you know, managing to lower our curve and our contact with our senior population. Monday, we will deliver again another five-pack of emergency meals to our clients. It's about nine hundred and fifty people. Again, pushing a five, over five thousand meals for next week with a five-pack emergency meal service. And then we'll be back our hot meals on April twenty-seventh.
Very good. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn is always in order.
Well moved.
We have motion and support. All those in favor?
My.
I, I.
Hi. Chair Carrie. Have a good evening, everyone. Be safe.
Good night.
Thank you.